Did you meet that whole background?
No.
He's about halfway through.
Warm down in one piece.
It's warming here, so you might want to take your jacket off.
It's warm. You're sick. Because I'm not warm today.
Okay. It's me then, I apologize. All right, Chief. Whenever you're ready. Nope. Get set up, we're early. Okay, we're all back. Chief has joined us.
So, good afternoon. My understanding is you're looking for information specific to issues related to replica guns or toy guns and the frequency of observance here in the city. I can tell you that in looking at the stats, over the past three years, I'm sorry, over the past... I did say three, but I was...
Jim.
But I was actually incorrect, I meant to say six as opposed to sixty, so six. Over the last six years, we're averaging about, we recover approximately seven of these BB, airsoft, replica, toy type guns. Year to date, we are actually at eight of these types of weapons. The most recent one was recovered actually just earlier this afternoon. We had some kids who stole a vehicle and were driving around town with clown masks on, brandishing a, one of these little BB guns as they were driving through. They did, they...
They went for the grand prize.
They went for the trifecta, they did, unfortunately.
That's how you get to the front page of CNN.
Yes.
Unbelievable.
So, as far as what other jurisdictions in this area, they're not doing anything different other than what we're currently doing. We do prohibit the discharge of these types of weapons inside the city limits. And as far as close calls go, I'm really not sure, I mean, we haven't had any officer-involved shooting related to them, so I don't exactly know what the intention was behind that question, but if you can give me some more information, I'll be more than happy to try to parse that together for you.
So, the seven, if I understand, the seven that you have, or the eight this year, were they involved in a, some kind of crime? Or potential crime? Or they just collected? Yeah, that's my...
They're usually found on the individuals doing crime.
Oh, okay. So, during the process of...
For another, I'll give you an example, theft of a bicycle near Cedar Crossing, and we recover a BB gun and a clip. We have, here's an assault with a weapon, and this particular individual was using the airsoft gun in that particular case. We have a narcotics possession, found in possession of another BB gun. So, you're gonna find the range.
So, maybe three were found like in the commission of a crime?
Oh, no, I was just reading samples, I mean, I'm looking, I'm looking over the span of the...
Six years.
Right. I'm just giving you some examples.
Other questions?
Sorry, what's that? Is it five dollars? Do I have to pay?
It's a quarter.
It's only a quarter?
We're cheap.
Is it five dollars or is it a quarter? I've got both.
Did we, this was here from...
I, I...
Yeah, you found this?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, to be more clear, we have a copy of Cumberland's...
Copy for the chief.
I...
...charge of firearms restricted.
Well, the first page is our code, and so basically, our code says it is unlawful for any person to discharge or set off any airgun, beam shooter, slingshot, or other light device within the corporate limits of the city. So, that's like just a blanket, you're not allowed to do it.
Correct.
And there's no exclusion in here for training facilities, gun ranges, test control companies that use them. So, I was looking, Cumberland updated theirs this year to include some exclusions for the training facilities, because I know that was one issue when we first started talking about it, that came up as the pest control. As far as what's sold, I don't know if Mr. Tillman found anything as far as what we're allowed to restrict or anything like that as far as stores, I don't even know if we're allowed to do that.
The, basically, what I found so far is that the federal law regulates it, and rather than the law that regulates firearms, it's basically, I think, the trade or commerce, one of those federal commissions that regulates the sale of the toy guns and what and how they have to be marked. But they specifically exclude BB guns, pellet guns, and I think, my understanding of the law is, is that you can't prohibit the sale of those items in the city. And that, I think, the government, I mean, California has passed a law regulating that there's gonna be like the color coding and the identification of the BB and pellet guns as well. The federal government hasn't done that at this point. And, you know, there's been no case law really yet challenging, as far as I can find anyway, the California statute. But I'm not 100% sure it would withstand a federal challenge.
In New Jersey, what I saw was New Jersey, this is a state law in New Jersey, but they regulate the airguns and BB guns as, they distinguish it...
As firearms.
As firearms.
Yeah, they do. And different states do different things, Maryland has not regulated, they don't go there. And they just let the federal government regulate the toys, and there's really no regulation of the other guns. But, you know, the only thing I found that I thought might be problematic is that the federal law actually says that the provisions of this section shall supersede any provision of state or local laws or ordinances which provide for markings or identification inconsistent with the provisions of this section, provided that, and then it says, "No state law shall prohibit the sale or manufacture of any look-alike, non-firing collector, replica, or antique firearm developed prior to 1898, or no state shall prohibit the sale, other than prohibiting the sale to minors, of traditional BB, paintball, or pellet firing airguns that expel projectile." By some means, I mean, I'm not reading it literally here, but... So, the federal government will not let you prohibit the sale, but you can regulate the use of them, there's no question about that. California has gone so far as to say, "Well, since the federal government doesn't regulate the markings of BB or pellet guns, we're gonna pass a law regulating marking BB and pellet guns." But I'm not, I'd like, I have not yet seen it, but I'd like to see what their attorney general wrote about that before they pass the law, because it's not 100% clear in my mind yet.
If we could, I think we need to separate the discussion into two pieces, because originally, my interpretation of what the request was, was to identify a toy gun in some way to distinguish it from a real gun, so that the children, the issue was originally, we talked about, was a children, a child accidentally getting shot by carrying a gun. This that we're talking about now is totally, in my opinion, is totally different, because now we're talking about regulating the discharge of a gun or a look-alike gun within city limits. I think there's two separate issues there.
Well, the other issue is that the federal government defines what's a toy, and that's not, a pellet gun isn't a toy, and neither is a BB gun.
BB gun or a...
So, they put them in a separate category.
Gotcha.
And the toys, really, as far as the toys go, there's really nothing we can do. Federal law regulates the marking of toys, and they're all now required to have certain markings and identifications that I'm guessing most police forces have been familiar with for some time.
Mr. Erickson, you had a question?
I'm not sure. If we make it so that we're able to differentiate between the toy gun and the regular gun, and the toy gun goes off, I'm trying to figure out how to slide somewhere in between when one is different from the other and when one becomes the other. So, let's say we do regulate it, and it goes off, and it sounds like a gunshot anyway, if someone goes, "Well, you regulated what it looked like, we didn't regulate," they couldn't, they couldn't discharge it.
Well, it's already illegal to discharge a BB gun in the city or an airsoft gun.
Right. I just, I'm trying to go back to the...
But not a cap gun, so your example of just making a noise, that's not...
The circle things.
Because it is largely indistinguishable, undistinguishable...
Indistinguishable.
Indistinguishable.
Yeah.
Between some of the sounds of toy guns and regular guns, just as the sound of an ambulance can sound just like the sound of a police car, unless you're the train either to know which one is different from the other.
As an aside, just very well, I'm thinking of it, is the use of any of those guns, does that change what the violation or the charge would be? In other words, if someone used a handgun in commission of, toy gun in commission of a robbery?
It does have an impact in the criminal court.
It does.
Yes, it does. It's a lesser impact.
Does... Because, is it because it's not...
Operational, an operational firearm per se that would actually fire?
Well, they can still be charged with assault.
It can, it is an assault, right.
But the penalty is less severe for that.
So, can I ask you? I see, I'm kinda formulating a little matrix here.
No doubt.
Yes. Not the matrix, but...
I wanna see you fly.
But I mean, there's kind of four categories of things that we're talking about regulating, and then four different types of weapons that we're talking about. I think, and I could be wrong, but I see the four categories, or the four types of weapons as toy, airsoft, you know, something, you know, which isn't gonna do serious injury, BB and pellet, which can, and then replica firearm, which I call a fourth category. Maybe I'm leaving something out here, not touching real firearms here. And then, and then I see design, sale, possession, and discharge. And on the discharge, it seems that we have the city ordinances to cover that. And it actually, I think it does say that licensed shooting ranges between 6:00 AM and 11:00 PM in the city, you're allowed to discharge.
That's for firearms.
Right.
That's a separate, I mean, I know it's sort of the same thing, but...
No, because according to federal law, a BB gun is a firearm.
No, it's not.
It's not?
No, Jersey.
New Jersey said, but federal law distinguishes between, I don't remember the exact words they use, but in other words, if an explosion causes the bullet to go versus air or CO2, they interpret that differently.
Okay. So, toy and replica discharge is inapplicable. Airsoft and BB and pellet guns, we haven't addressed. We have no regulation on the discharge of airsoft and BB and pellet guns inside the city. Is that fair to say? Or would you disagree?
Say that again.
We think that is regulated.
They are right.
I think they are.
Yeah, it says...
Would you include airsoft in that?
It says airgun, so, I mean, it didn't...
Even if fires, if it fires a plastic projectile and stuff?
Yeah, because they got it categorized with beam shooters and slingshots and other light devices.
Such as your paintball guns.
You gotta say like a beam shooter.
Beam shooter.
Paintball guns would also, I would argue, would fall under this as well.
Okay. What about, so, design, we're talking, feds cover toy design?
Yes.
Do the feds cover the design of airsoft and paintball guns?
No, not.
They may under a product safety rule, but I don't, that I haven't looked at that part yet.
I wasn't able to find them.
What about BB and pellet?
They exclude the BBs and pellet guns from the federal regulations with regard to firearms. But they, and then they treat toys differently than the BB and pellet guns. Toys are regulated by, instead of being regulated by the firearms agency, they're regulated by, like, I forgot which one it was, it's in here. Maybe commerce, I can't remember. But, but then they kinda let BB and pellets fall in between, as far as I can tell in the federal law. But they do say that, they, I mean, the same law that says what the markings will be on a toy says that they exclude the BB and the pellet guns from that classification, and then say that any state or local law is preempted with regard to the markings of, you know, so that's why it's not 100% clear to me. California has, I think, interpreted that to mean that because they excluded those, we can regulate them separately, but it's not, they do it all in the same section, and, you know, it's...
So, what about...
Because the feds said you don't have to mark them, maybe that's the law.
What about the sale of toy guns? There's no real...
Yeah, we, but the way I understand it, we...
Because again, it's two separate categories.
Just toy, right?
We can't prohibit the sale of those items in the city of Salisbury, toy guns or...
What about airsoft and paintball?
I think not.
What about BB and pellet?
No, I think that BB and pellet, because they have a projectile, are treated like the airsoft, if I'm not mistaken.
So, you can't restrict the sale?
Yeah, although the airsoft guns, they usually are marked, aren't they? That's my own recollection of them.
Usually a bright color, but not necessarily.
Airsoft or some of them, I've seen.
They're usually clear, which is part, what's required by some of the statutes, so I may be mixing them up, but clearly the pellet and BB guns are treated differently.
What about the sale of replica firearms?
And they address the issue of replicas, and you don't have to mark those as long as, you know, they're basically sold as an antique replica type. You, I mean, you can't market them to kids. If you were to market them to kids and they were very, you know, real replicas, I think they'd be treated as a toy at that point, because they talk about marketing them for display and that kind of stuff, so...
So, what about the possession of toy guns?
I don't know.
What about the possession of airsoft and paintball guns?
I don't think there's anything, you could, you could regulate those, I think, possession of those items.
I'm just asking theoretically.
No, I think theoretically you can regulate those.
BB and pellet guns?
Yeah, and you can do a lot more regulation, if, the one thing the federal law says you can't prohibit the sale of, that's the language they use, but you, but I think the courts have interpreted that to mean that you can regulate those items.
So, if, I mean, just that little matrix, there's seemingly no regulation of the design of BB and pellet guns? Is that what you're saying?
Of the, these were, this, the laws that I looked at were dealing with the markings of them, not the safety issue. There may be regulation with regard to safety issues, but I'm not, that, I haven't gone there yet.
So, really, we're talking about possession. Because sale is not really in our wheelhouse, discharge is, is, and is covered. So, you're talking about possession.
And I think possession can be regulated. To some degree, I mean, you could go so far as to, if you go so far as to make it impossible to sell them, because I think some local governments were allowing sales, but the merchants had to deliver them outside city limits and that kind of stuff, so...
Can I ask this question? Actually, it's two parts. I think, I don't know what, no, it has to happen this evening, if the two people are gonna ask this question, too, won't you take time to? I would like from Councilman Doe, if he could help us with a clearer... I don't wanna say reason, because I don't think that's, anybody have a better word? A clear rationale for, if we were to do something, what that rationale is. From the chief, if we could, is there, is there, does law enforcement, and I'm not saying I agree or disagree, does law enforcement believe that there is a pressing need for this, or is it something else, some other tool in the toolbox that they might want to? I'm willing to help out in any way with a vote, I just, I, and I'm not saying the matrix, it may on a reserve, it may confuse me further, but he has cleared up a little bit more with it, with this doesn't sort of apply because it already applies here. I don't know if anybody else feels that way, I just... And I, believe me, I am guilty of this in every way, shape, or form of it going from this, and then all of a sudden, we're out, you know, we're out here, and somehow getting right back to the, I'd like to get right back to the original question. I don't know if that helps first, or...
No, that helps, I'd like to know what the original question was myself.
Okay.
Well, I had a couple residents approach me over the course of a couple months, and they were different people, not connected. I think they had an issue with one of the kids that had come in, come in with one of these, and the police weren't involved in it, but, so their concern was some of the availability in some of the stores, because some of them are not locked up, kids can just go in, cut them off the shelf, cut it out, and, you know, they can go do, and I know incidents over the past few years, some of the police have recovered, that they believe were used in robberies or whatever, and some of them, we think that they were probably stolen, and that it was probably kids that had used it, not, the results of those investigations, I don't know, I just provided information. But I think that was some of the concern, where some of the parents were seeing that these were readily available, and some of them had seen where some states abandoned, and then there was the issue that happened in Baltimore with the child that was shot, and the child that was killed in Cleveland. So, I think some of them were concerned that there was access to them, and that, you know, kids, I mean, we've all been kids, and we've all, you know, I, most of my life, I grew up out in the country, so we were, you know, I was shooting a 22 when I was five years old, so, I mean, you know, but in the city, it's different, because it's denser, and, you know, when I was, when I was shooting, there was a woods behind me, and there was nothing back there. If I go up my backyard and do it now, my neighbor's house is right there, so you can't, you can't do that. But I think that was, part of that came from the concern that they look real, that kids have them, and they're, and they're out and about, walking around the neighborhoods, basically. And a lot of people, whether it's a police officer, or whether somebody else sees it, and they, and they report it, and an officer comes up, you know, and if the kid points it, how quick doesn't a police officer have it, make a decision whether it's real or whether it's not? And we don't want the child to get shot, but then we also don't want a situation that, what if a child had that, hold of a real gun?
And shot.
And shot a police officer. So, you know, both ways, we don't want anybody to get shot.
You wanna be able to identify.
And no police officer, you know, first parent...
I do understand.
Want to live with the rest of their life, but the child was killed having a BB gun, and no police officer wants to live with the rest of their life, knowing that they had done that.
Yeah.
So, that, I think, was the heart of it, on allowing, what are, I mean, the question was, what are we allowed to do? And, you know, other than, at least we're talking about it, it's upfront, maybe parents can educate their children, you know, and we were always taught, whether it's a toy, whether it's not, you don't point at anybody.
You follow me today about that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, but today is, part of it, is some things have changed in their culture, those lessons aren't ingrained in children, and sometimes it's too late. So, that was, that was the heart of the issue. The other, I brought this out, was, is I looked at what our code said, and then I tried to look at other towns and cities in Maryland that had taken action, and so far, than what I could find, was Cumberland that had actually gone through it. And that, but this, what, that's a separate, that's a separate issue, because that's just...
So, Cumberland doesn't address the toy gun?
The toy gun, no, because I think, as Mark said, toy guns, which is, everything's categorized differently, and that's regulated by federal law.
It's actually the Consumer Product Safety Commission who regulates toy guns.
You know, the, I don't disagree with anything you said, and I wish there was a way we could do this. My issue is, we're limited as to what we can do. For instance, Delaware is right, and if they don't initiate something like this, and Virginia doesn't, you know, it just...
We're caught in the middle.
If you, we're caught, yeah.
Do we, do we, this is an opportunity to, instead of what can't we do? Would we, could we ask the mayor and the chief to come back, put some options about what we could do in... In, oh, what a day. Instead of, in lieu of, in addition to what we have already, is it a series of public service announcements? Is it, is it, take a look at the, I, I say this, now I don't say this without disrespect, but the Daily Times would love to do a story with a gun on the front of it, no matter what it is. So, is there an opportunity there to, to...
Use it as a...
Maybe take the instances that the chief has, and this is really up to you two, not to me, it's just a suggestion, and say, these were the toy guns we were looking at, and show it to the public, and say, this is what parents, maybe as a public service to them as well, I don't know, I'm just, I'm saying...
I like that idea.
Yeah, the need to advocate.
Because we're so constrained with the law, the federal, the state, the use of the word contrivance in this law from Cumberland, which I'm not sure, or any other contrivance, you know, it seems to me that it really comes down to the parent knowing that this is a toy gun, kid knowing that this is the toy gun, the officer knowing the toy gun, and that everybody trying to act accordingly, and we may only be able to get to that point through outreach.
I like that idea, especially the public service announcement type stuff, and things that we can take a positive stance as opposed to a negative...
Well, you wanna give somebody something they can do, instead of taking something away, and somebody...
Yes, that was pretty good.
Yeah, you really did.
That was pretty good.
Well, three weeks before election, wow.
Okay.
Can you tell us about a lot, but?
Mr. Mayor?
Can I also add too, and I would be remiss, but if I did, but again, you know, I can't get enough training. I can't get enough funding for training to safely de-escalate on a routine, you know, everyday basis, I'm not saying that. The officers of the Salisbury Police Department and our colleagues that we share policing responsibilities with here in this region do an outstanding job confronting these issues and dealing with them, and managing successful outcomes. So, I think another component would be, which goes hand in hand with the educational piece for our parents out there that are looking for solutions as well, is just to be mindful of the different training components that come along with this as well. You know, it can never go stale, it can never be too much when it comes to de-escalation, when it comes to approaching these things safely, when it comes to responding with adequate resources so that you can safely handle the situation as it comes up.
It's a far cry. Personally, I'm not sure where I stand on a lot of these things, the emails that we got from the Eastern Shore, I don't know if it was the Gun Club, not the Gun Club...
It was NRA.
Yeah, just, you know, kids need to be taught, if that were the case, if kids need to be taught, then the first thing we would be teaching them is not to point them at other people. And that's a fine line between other people and animals, or targets, or whatever it is that they, that they want to do. But if there are instances, chief, that you have, that you can use as examples of how we can better interact with the public, that would be great, but, you know, that's something that you and the mayor have to do.
Certainly.
No, I'm fine, I really, actually, I agree with what Mayor is doing, I appreciate him doing it, because we need to make people aware, and making them know that we are aware of what's going on, and how things are being done other places. So, that sends out a signal to people that, to let them know that we care, and we want them to be educated on the guns, and not having guns, and I really... and not having guns, and I really wish they would color code the guns, so they could be, no, you know, noticed when they're in, um, this kinda trying time when police, uh, it's a, um, how can I say it? When it's a standoff, you know, to know that this is not a real gun, and so that either the child doesn't get killed. But, you know, I'm just researching, and we can keep researching and keep doing some more, um, advocating for these things, and I have your back, because I do, I, I, I'm, I hate guns. I'm, I'll be honest with you, I do not like them, and I definitely do not like them for kids. So, anything that you need me to help you do, I will so do that for you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Mayor?
I mean, without a doubt, I think the chief and I need to talk about some things offline, but, but I, I see the, I see the solutions that we're talking about is falling into three categories. Uh, one is public service and education, and, you know, that's certainly something that I need to learn more about, you know, how right to frame that.
Mm-huh.
The second is education and advocacy with stores directly. Uh, actually, I'll add a fourth. Uh, the third is training, which the chief already addressed. The fourth is design advocacy. I feel like we've got a responsibility, if we wanna see more universal, um, prescription of the, you know, hot pink application to, you know, to-
Limberine.
Toys, that, to toys that-
Yeah.
Aren't going to be able, aren't going to do damage or, or harm to a human, uh, which is gonna draw a different reaction from an officer than, you know, a, a black or silver not toy. And we, we've got a responsibility, I think, to talk to federal officials about that, so, and I think our attention's probably gotta be focused on it. So, maybe we can talk and, and develop some pathways for that advocacy, uh, think about it. And maybe talk to our congressmen, our senators about, you know, well, who, who's the right, where is the right forum to have that conversation? So, maybe we can do some, some brainstorming and come up with some, some thoughts for how to handle that, and then collectively, we can all do some advocacy as a process.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, appreciate it very much.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Here and put. Okay, I think we're, uh, anybody have anything else that we need to discuss? If not, we will recess, uh, until six o'clock, and we will reconvene at six o'clock for our closed session. Thank you.